Good evening, the Tuesday, April 2nd, 2019 meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council is now called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a brief invitation to our community, to our residents about open podium. Open podium is an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to Eden Prairie City Government before each council meeting. Typically, the first and third Tuesday of each month from 6:30 to 6:55 PM here in the council chamber. If you wish to speak at open podium, please contact the city manager's office at 952-949-8412. By noon of the meeting date with your name, phone number, and subject matter so that we can be better prepared for you. If time permits, after scheduled speakers are finished, the mayor will open the floor to unscheduled speakers. Open podium is not recorded or televised. If you have questions about open podium, please contact the city manager's office. We do have a presentation this evening, Mr. Lothammer.
Your honor, council members, I feel like my purpose here tonight is to help Valerie carry awards around. And this, tonight is for the community center, several awards that she'll tell you a little bit more about. But I know several weeks ago, we all had the opportunity to spend an afternoon at the community center. And I know that you truly appreciate the amount of people and volume of things that come through there. And it's quite the high-energy place. And the person that's very responsible for that is the person that leads the team and really directs and instills that customer service, as well as that really energy that you feel when you're over at the community center. And that's Valerie Verley, who's our community center manager. So I'd like to invite Mayor Case to come down to help accept these awards. And then I'll turn it over to Valerie to tell you a little bit more about them.
All right, so thank you for that opening, Jay. These, I'm here again this year, it's my honor, your honor, and council members to tell you that we are the recipient of three of the Sun Current Readers' Choice Awards. Three of them, in fact, Best Indoor Water Park, Best Fitness Center, and Best Recreational Center. It is the second year in a row now that we have been the recipient of all three, so we feel very honored. And I especially feel honored with these awards because they're, it's very passive for us. We don't go out and foster votes. It is all people who visit us, who know us, and nominated us for these awards within the community and the region at large. So it does feel very special. We're just rounding out about a million visitors per year. We say that we serve everyone from six months to 100 years of age. And we see that pretty often throughout the day and waves throughout the center. There's senior population heavy in the middle of the day, there's after-work crowd, there's families coming for programs. It's always busy, it's always something different and fun. And even just last weekend, we had a huge hockey tournament in town. And they had people from throughout the state that were requesting visits, even though they live in Morehead and they're never going to be a member. But they're very curious about the facility, whether it be coaches, other park and rec professionals. And they were all very impressed with our facility. And that just felt really good because they really had nothing to gain by it. But they said they were very impressed with our facilities and what we're able to have here. So we're very proud of all the awards and very proud that we get to serve the community at large with the different amenities we have and feel that we have something for everyone. So I'm the lucky one who gets to lead a team of amazing staff and to get to do this every day. So without further ado.
Congratulations, that's a great, great set of awards. And I use the community center often and I can verify that it is a great, great place to work out and get some recreation there. And, and all the staff are wonderful. And I know all the instructors for the group fitness class are great. So we, we have a good, good legacy to be proud of. So thank you for all your work.
Thank you for all the happy staff that are over there. It does make it a more fun place to have people around that look like they're enjoying being there.
I also want to say thank you. And I'll tell you a quick story. My sister lives in Canada and she, when she come and visit, she and her husband go, go to the community center and they love it. So in a Canadian perspective, we are pretty good.
Anyone else? Great. Valerie, thank you so much. All right. Moving on to the agenda, are there any items anyone wishes to add to the agenda this evening? I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda then.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, minutes. Does anyone have anything to question of either of the workshop or the regular meeting held on March 19th? Anything in the minutes you'd wish to question or change or edit? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve both of them in one motion.
I move to approve the following city council minutes.
Of the workshop and the meeting held on March 19th, all right. Not to put words in your mouth, but we all knew that.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right. We have no reports of boards or commissions, consent calendar. We have a lot of items on the, well, I guess A to S, good amount. Any items to question, would you like to pull, ask staff about? Is there a motion then to approve the items A to S?
I'll move to approve items A through S on the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So we do have only, well, actually we have two, two public hearings this evening. The first one is Beverly Hill. Mr. Getcho.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and city council members. Our first public hearing is a rezoning and a resolution for a preliminary plat. A rezoning from rural to R1-9.5. The applicant here is requesting a development, a detached, single-family residential lot development known as Beverly Hill. The site is approximately 6.8 acres and currently consists of two existing single-family homes and accessory buildings. The site is located directly north of the Reader Ridge Development and west of the Meadows at Riley Creek and has frontage on Beverly Drive and Eden Prairie Road. It is surrounded by other existing single-family residential uses. The plat and all the material that you have in the packet complies with all city zoning setback and lot size requirements in the city code. This is, it's not needed to be a planned unit development. There are no waivers being requested. There aren't any variances being requested with this application. There is a letter that was submitted and asked to be a part of the packet from a neighbor. And tonight, we do have the applicant here to provide a presentation and an overview of their residential development. And then the developer applicant, city staff can obviously answer any questions the council would have prior to a public hearing and then action requested for the first reading of this development.
Good evening. My name is John Anderson. I'm the project manager for the Beverly Hill Development. Mark Gergen is the owner, who's also in the audience here tonight as well. And the actual developer, that's going to be the name on the development, is Great Oaks 2nd LLC. What we're proposing is a 17-lot, single-family detached subdivision. And as was mentioned, it's north of Beverly Drive and west of Eden Prairie Road. Here's kind of a general location map, kind of showing the area. And as you can see, the kind of north-south road to the east of the little red area is kind of the project. This is kind of located down in the south part of the city. Here's an aerial photo of the site that shows the two properties that are part of the plat outlined in red. The larger property to the west is the 16-540 Beverly Drive. There's an existing single-family home and an outbuilding on that property. And the smaller property on Eden Prairie Road is a single-family home with a small outbuilding on there as well. And basically, as you can see, there's quite a few trees on the eastern part on the Eden Prairie Road property. And as part of this, we will be saving the house on the Eden Prairie Road property, but the structures on the Beverly Drive property will be removed. Here's a picture of the primary plat. As I mentioned, there's 17 lots and two outlots. The larger outlot A is on the northwest corner, it's kind of a triangle-shaped parcel. This will be for stormwater ponding. And outlot B, which is on Eden Prairie Road between lots 16 and 17, is also for stormwater management. Both of these outlots will be deeded for the city, or to the city, and will be used for maintenance for stormwater. The site plan here kind of gives a little more detailed outline, showing where the houses will be located on the lots and the ponding and things of that nature. One thing to note is there will be a sidewalk connection to Prospect Road. This will be located between lots three and four and come off our cul-de-sac and connect to the sidewalk on Prospect Road for pedestrian access. Here's a copy of the grading plan. Previously at the public hearing at the planning commission meeting, that we had a little bit of revisions made since then. There was a request to look at saving significant tree number 75, which is kind of on the east side of the cul-de-sac, up on the hill above the lots on Eden Prairie Road. There's quite a bit of grade difference from the top of the hill, about 50 feet to the bottom. And because of that, we're proposing the cul-de-sac up in the north part of the site with the lots fronting down on Eden Prairie Road and then three lots fronting, excuse me, fronting Beverly Drive. And we're going to be saving all those trees that were looked at on that aerial photo through that area. Now, some are being removed, but there's a big swath of those being saved. And we were able to revise that grading to save that significant tree as well, which is a heritage tree, tree preservation plan. Here's the landscaping plan. With the revision in the grading and saving more trees, we were able to save quite a few. So, but we do have to replace some trees and replacing a little bit over 100 trees on site. And these will be spread out on different lots and around the ponding and things like that, in addition to the trees that are already being saved, so. Here's some lot standards and some zoning information. We're proposing a zone to R1-9.5. The minimum lot size and lot width for this district is 9,500 square feet and 70 feet in width. The proposed average lot size is 14,323 square feet. The average lot width is 81.9 feet in width. And the smallest lot is 10,422 square feet and the largest lot is 20,254 square feet. The smallest lots on the site are the two located on Eden Prairie Road and the lots fronting on Beverly Drive. All the cul-de-sac lots, for the most part, are larger in nature and have bigger backyards because a lot of them do pie out and get wider as you go back. Some home construction items, there will be covenants recorded against these lots. And architectural guidelines will apply to the property. So all houses being built out here, we'll have to adhere to those requirements. Some of those will include minimum square footage, building material types, different things of that nature. Home prices will range from approximately $500,000 to $900,000. These are approximate estimates. It's very possible we could have an individual buyer that wants to include additional upgrades and we could exceed $1 million on a house or two on that cul-de-sac. We're estimating the lowest-priced homes will be the ones fronting down on Eden Prairie Road due to the, you know, larger street and, you know, more traffic. And they're, they're not the best lots compared to what the cul-de-sac lots are, which is where the nicer lots will be. We're looking at a mix of two-story and rambler homes out there. And these homes will all be constructed by custom builders. So every home will be customized with specific features for that individual builder. So we look to have quite a range of different styles of two-story and rambler homes in this project. Some other project highlights, I mentioned earlier, the houses and buildings on 16-540 Beverly Drive will be removed. The house at 9,800 Eden Prairie Road will be saved. It'll be put on its own lot. I think that's lot 17. I mentioned the tree buffer between the cul-de-sac on the top and the lots down on Eden Prairie Road. That'll act as a nice screening between those two backyards of those lots. And as I mentioned earlier, 100 trees or over 100 trees will be planted as part of the landscape plan with this development. And once again, I'll take any comments or questions and go from there.
Council, questions for the proponent? I think I saw Councilmember Bravo first.
So John, thanks for coming tonight and presenting. I know in the past, in talking with owners in this area, that there was some concerns about costs of developing due to a lot of variation in height and in terms of moving dirt and things like that. And, and so one of the questions I have is, is are you going to be, what are you going to have to do in terms of moving dirt? How much dirt are you going to have to take off the, off the property, if any? And, and kind of what, what is the plan regarding that?
Yeah, so with the layout that we have and the design we have in place, the site balances. So we won't have to import or export any dirt off the site. With the previous layout that was looked at a few years back, I don't believe it was ever acted on or brought before the planning commissioner council, it actually showed a road stubbing to the north as a through road versus a cul-de-sac road. The access onto Beverly Drive is a little bit further to the east on the roadway. And if we were to do that roadway, we would have to drop the grade to match in that hillside. And it'd be about 30,000 yards of export approximately off that site. That, you're probably looking at a minimum of 300,000 in cost, additional cost to export that. In order to drop those grades, you'd also be looking at basically clearcutting the entire lot and saving no trees. So by keeping the cul-de-sac, we're able to keep the, the top of the hill up high, create the additional views, which are amenity to those lots, also keep that tree buffer between the cul-de-sac up on the top and the lots down below, and save all those significant trees. And there's quite a few heritage trees in there as well. So that was a big factor in what we looked at. And you're probably looking at around a half-million-dollar swing with the export of the dirt and the value, or devaluation of the lots based on having a through road versus the cul-de-sac.
Yeah, so I applaud you on, on the design because I know that the challenges presented before with the previous design, because I looked at the previous design and I think this is a great solution that's going to save money and yield better lots with saving more trees. So good job on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Not sure who was next, but Councilmember Norion and then Nelson.
Thank you, John. I am, I'm really pleased that we are building more houses. But I'm not sure 500 to $1 million is the right range, but that's your business decision. I understand that. I do have a couple of questions, though, clarification questions. So, so there's a couple of houses that you have the entrance from the Eden Prairie Road. Is that cause additional traffic in the Eden Prairie Road or any chance of more accidents in that design?
There will be two additional driveway access points out to Eden Prairie Road. And maybe staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe the classification of that roadway does allow driveways. Now, obviously, it's not ideal, but with the, with the, what we're dealing with here is a topography issue with the land and the trees out there. And it is possible that you will have more access points coming and going. But as we said, if we were to put lots fronting up to that cul-de-sac, you'd literally lose every tree and have to drop the grade significantly out there to make that design work. So the best solution was to show two lots. The existing house that's already there is staying. And then we also put a ponding area down there. And that outlot B was large enough to be its own separate lot, but we thought, let's try to eliminate one driveway off that outlot, put the pond there. And like I said, that's why we felt those lots down on Eden Prairie Road would be the lowest value of the neighborhood, so.
And I'm, I'm really glad that you decided to keep a lot of trees because of this specific design that you have selected. I think it's overall, it's a good, good design. And I'm, I'm glad we are not cutting trees and replacing them and you preserving it, it's the right thing to do. So applause for that. In terms of energy saving, are you considering any energy-saving ideas into the new development, sustainability?
Yeah, so from a sustainability standpoint, I talked to the staff about this here recently. You know, one of the things that we looked at, you know, as a single-family home, there's obviously a lot of individual input from the buyer as to what they want. And I know some things have been brought up about like electrical outlets in the garage for potential electrical cars. Now, if a specific buyer wanted that, we can definitely build that into the home. One thing I should mention, as a developer, we do have custom builders that are local to the area that we've been having negotiations with. And as we've talked about this, they're aware of certain things like this that may come up. But once again, an individual buyer would potentially request that if they wanted that. As far as other items that we looked at, without having, you know, access from a roadway or a vehicle to the north that we put in the sidewalk after talking with staff. And that sidewalk will access that. So from a walking standpoint, if somebody wanted to get to the northwest, they can walk over there very easily versus potentially getting in a car, driving out to Beverly Drive, going west, going north, and coming back around and making that trip, which ends up being a longer trip from a walking, whereas you can just cut through. So sustainability of the sidewalk helps with that as well. And that's, you know, some of the main items we've talked about.
The last, last question. Have you heard any concern from the neighbors regard to this development in terms of increasing traffic in that area? Or any other concern that you, have you heard?
Yes, so we did have a neighborhood meeting a few weeks back. There was about 15 or so residents that showed up. There was residents that came to the planning commission meeting. Some of the items with traffic, there was a question whether the cul-de-sac on the access point with Beverly Drive was in a good location. City staff has verified that that site will work. These are local streets designed to handle this, this additional traffic. So with any new house or new development, you will get additional traffic. But it's not over exceeding or exceeding the capacity of these roadways or intersections. And I think city staff had.
Mayor, one more question, sorry. The last question is, this time, the Prospect Street right now end in Eden Prairie Road. And it's a step going to the other end. Is this development anyway, any concern, any problem in the future to development closing that street? I don't know that we ever need to, but in the future, is there any plan?
From our end, we have no plans with the Prospect Road, you know, connection or if it's going to be stub, cul-de-sack off or not put through. I guess that's ultimately up to those landowners in the city to work a plan. I know there's some options up there to look at. But from a specific standpoint, it doesn't matter to us if it goes through or doesn't go through. I guess it doesn't affect what we're proposing, so.
Is any comment from the city staff, right?
In terms of.
In terms of the Prospect Street.
Mr. Ellis could talk about any road connections.
Mayor Case, Councilmember Norian, I have some exhibits that maybe would be helpful to show on a document cam of options we've looked at for that east-west connection that city staff feels we do need with the number of homes that are being built out here and the number of homes that are yet to come. So if I could walk over there, I could show that or wait till later.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, let's get a couple more, let's get the public hearing. And then let's get Councilmember Nelson's, just concerns directly for the proponent, maybe right now.
Oh, thank you.
That street is a, a major issue and we do want to address that from a city perspective, maybe not this development directly. But I, I think we would like to hear from that.
John, thank you so much for your.
Councilmember Nelson, then we have Councilmember Freiberg.
Starting off with one question is, is we've got a lot of two-story homes in Eden Prairie, but not enough of them have first-floor masters so that they can be used, you know, a forever home style or something that, you know, a couple may view themselves as needing later on. Are you going to make sure that a lot of your homes have first-floor masters?
I don't know if I can answer that question 100% directly due to the fact that it's an individual preference on the customization of the home. We have seen over time here, and I know Mark can probably attest to this better than I can, that you're seeing more buyers looking at the ramblers. You know, it's been said forever that they're going to build more ramblers. We are seeing that now to get people more on that main level living. So it is possible some people could request a main-story master, master bedroom on the main floor. I know a lot of the families or the people that will be looking at this are considered families with children. A lot of times, they like having their bedrooms on the same floor as their children's. And that's why the two-story has been a popular structure.
Well, you can have a two-story and still have a first-floor bedroom that can be used as a guest room at one stage in life and as a master bedroom later on in life. Could even be used as a study at some point. But we're finding a real problem with homes that are two stories that don't have that. And it's rather, it's important for the kinds of homes we'd like to have adding into our housing stock to make sure we are getting the kinds of homes that people can live in at all stages in life and don't have to try to figure out how to redevelop their house when they're, discovered that stairs aren't quite as easy as they were when they were 35 or 40. Also, for energy efficiency, will you have all water sensor sprinklers put into these homes?
I don't know if I know that answer for sure.
What about, are you encouraging people to put in solar panels on these homes? Or at least have them with a roof line that's very suitable to at least some section of roof being solar?
I guess we haven't encouraged it specifically. We really haven't had conversations with the buyers yet on that. But it is something I, you know, I don't know if we're planning on doing that specifically, but.
It is cost effectuation. And though it hasn't started in the United States, other countries are requiring it. And it just seems like having the ability, whether they do it when it's built or they do it five years later, is becoming more and more important to do, especially in this income category. You can't really say, well, we can't do it because we're trying to keep the price down. At those prices, that's not really an issue. I assume staff, the turnaround is big enough for school buses and fire trucks and stuff?
Yes.
And, let's see. I think that that's all my questions right at the moment.
Thank you. Councilmember Freiberg.
Hi, Mr. Anderson, thank you for presenting tonight. I'm looking at your landscaping plan and I understand some trees are going to have to be taken. And the ones that don't really rattle me too much when it comes down to the significant ones. When we start putting a word of heritage there, you got my attention now. You know, I'm looking at that you're going to be taking two trees that looks like 54 inches. And our requirement is two times that, or 108 inches. Though we both know that's not always the same thing. I mean, inches, those are two pretty good-sized trees. Are they just in such a place that there's no other option except to remove those?
That is correct. I think those trees you're specifically talking about are right, basically where two houses need to go down on lots 15 and 16 fronting Beverly Drive, I believe.
It's tree number 41 and 44. They're, one's a Douglas fir, that's 26 inches. One's a pine scotch, that's 28 inches.
Yeah, correct. Those are down on the pads for lots 15 and 16. So if those were to stay, those houses would not be able to be built in those locations.
That's pretty much the option, one of the.
Yeah, and I know, like I said, we revised the grading a little bit up to save 75, which also was considered a heritage tree. So that one was being removed, now is being saved. And that was one that the planning commission requested to take a look at, so.
When they're looking at 75, there, that red cedar, it says fair. What, what, you know, is the chances of the surviving of that tree pretty high in saving it? Just from what you've been told?
From what I've been told, that the trees are kind of labeled as good, fair, poor. The fair trees may have a little distress to them, but it's very possible that they will be, you know, they will live through this. The poor trees are the ones that you need to kind of worry about.
They're pretty much done.
Yeah, but with that being said. But with that being said, a million things can happen where a tree can die, or, you know, the tree you think's going to die tomorrow lives for another 20 years, so. But we expect the trees that are in there to be saved, and there shouldn't be any issues, so.
When you're, when you're looking at replacing 108 inches with taking that 54, what size are you going to be talking, probably per tree, just so I can get it in my head a little bit?
All right, so on the landscaping plan, we have a planting schedule. And for instance, the Autumn Blaze maples, and there's a bunch of different trees that are being installed, are like a three-inch bald and burlapped tree, so it'd be like a three-inch diameter tree. Most of those are three to four inches in diameter. There's eastern white pine and black hill spruce trees, so some evergreens, and those are eight, eight-feet-tall bald and burlapped trees as well.
Eight foot is about, basically, is that around the three-inch range?
I guess, I don't know.
Probably a little small.
Evergreens, they base them on height and not by trunk size, so. But, you know, typical trees, seen a lot of subdivisions of six foot, these are eight foot, so they're a little bit bigger than a normal tree, so.
Well, I'm looking at that, and I think you made a fair, you know, you answered my question. I understand sometimes, you know, decisions have to be made like that, and you did a pretty fair effort off on that, you know, in explaining it and also with what you're replacing. Thank you.
And as a developer, we look at trees as an amenity, and if we can save them, we want to save them, but there comes...
I like that thinking, thank you.
Good. Councilmember Nelson had one other question.
Yeah, it was on the two lots that go out onto Eden Prairie Road. Will the driveways be such that cars can back up and go out headfirst onto that road?
At this point, we do not show that, I guess.
No, that's what I was noticing, it didn't, and it's fairly important.
I guess we do not show that. I'd have to look and see how everything grades out. I know we have utilities in those areas as well, since we have to run water and sewer off the boulevards.
Given that road, I would like to see, you know, some area that's just barely big enough to turn your car around, which many homes have anyway. But I think, given that road, that that's an important amenity for those two lots.
And I think that's something we can look at. We can talk to the engineer and see how we can, you know, configure that in there. I'm looking at the utility plan, there's a manhole on lot 15. I don't think we'll have an issue on lot 16, but I think we have enough room there to be able to do something.
Yeah, well, there should be some way to do it because it's a safety matter for both the people on the road and for the residents that are backing out of the driveway every day and coming onto a busy road.
Counsel, we'll have time for more questions after the public hearing, so we'll go ahead and hold the public hearing. Thank you. So people in the audience, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone that would like to address the counsel on this topic, please step forward, give your name and address. All right, no one?
Seeing none, I would like to move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay. So counsel, we've done a fair amount of discussion, but let's continue that. I think, if you don't mind, I'll just open it up, this part, to say to the proponent, several things I was really pleased at. I think you've heard several of these compliments from my colleagues here tonight, but just things we've run across in the past occasionally. Granted, most outlots that have been problematic don't have the nurp ponds within them, but, and therefore, that means they've typically not been given over to the city. But I'm pleased that these are going to be in city control, because that's been an issue in years past, where an outlet falls back into the city's hands and it's, you know, landlocked and anyway. So nice job on that. I think really good job on saving the trees, and again, it's just nice to hear that the things that the counsel over decades have been concerned about is coming back to us from the proponents, from the developers. So we appreciate that. Great example with the sidewalk, we've, I don't know, for lots of years, but the last, what, about eight, nine months ago, we had the project up on Dell that we connected a neighborhood, and so it's just nice again to know, I hope you're doing it because you know it's the right thing to do, but also that maybe you heard the counsel that this is a concern, that we really want to see neighborhoods connected so children can connect back and forth, and people can walk and get to, you know, parks and get to the trail system. So great job on the trail. I think that's all my comments at this point. Got a couple other small things, but counsel, why don't I allow anyone else to speak up or add to anything that you've said so far? Excuse me, I got a little emotional there. No, I'm kidding. Just get broken up. I compliment all of you. No, I wanted to say something that it's really great when we, as individual councilmembers, speak our thoughts and represent the people that we represent. That's what this is all about. That's a little bit different, however, than when we, as a counsel, agree, or at least a majority of us, on a direction. And those are the things that come out when we finally approve this, and we will actually direct staff to take something forward. So I just, when you throw out some things that are interesting to you, definitely when we pull this all together, let's look for consensus, that we have consensus. I know that a couple times now, at a couple meetings, the pricing of houses has come up, and I, and I think that's always a concern that we want to have a housing stock that is full on the continuum for all the people of Eden Prairie. That being said, unless we, as a government, truly want to incentivize or put dollars into it, it really is up to the market. My opinion, I'm expressing my opinion here, but it's really up to the market to drive that. And we've had situations in the last, Brad, you maybe remember one across from Grace Church, but we've had situations where projects haven't worked. I mean, they've gone out and they've tried to sell at a certain price range, and it didn't work. And then they come back and they go and renegotiate with the seller, and then a new project comes in. So it's really not up to the, in my mind, the city council, to decide what the market's going to sustain. We can have our personal opinions that, my gosh, who's going to pay $1.8 million or something, whatever, but lo and behold, someone comes along and pays that. We just heard tonight from Mr. Schweeters with Wooddale, the project we approved at the last meeting. He's had over 100 people inquire now about the 17 lots that we did individually express a concern at the last meeting, that it was maybe too high-priced. So I just wanted to throw that out as a cautionary note. What I will try to do better as a mayor, and I've talked to Mr. Getchow, is that when we actually do approve this and direct staff, that I repeat back what, what those directions are, so staff does not get confused. And then Mr. Getchow will repeat back what he heard, not, not to be that legalistic, but anyway, just to make sure that we're very clear what's an individual councilmember's concern versus what is a consensus of this council going forward. With that said, any other comments?
I would like to instruct staff to take a look at those lots 15 and 16 and try to make driveways so that someone would have a, some chance of backing in, given car size and stuff, so they can go out right way and have that settled by second reading. I don't see a problem with any of the others so much, but I'm sure there's a fairly easy way to do that with those lots and with a little bit of thought. And I think that's important, just for the safety of the residents and the safety of the drivers. But I don't think it impedes tonight, but I think a little bit of work needs to be done there.
I think that's very reasonable, and we'll just, in fact, consensus on that, right? Okay, perfect. I think that's a very good idea. Other councilmembers?
Did, did you want to close the loop on future road connections and the discussion of what Robert was going to do?
Definitely want to have Mr. Ellis have a chance to get up. Do...
I just want to bring that up before you vote.
No, please, yeah, absolutely, thank you. Councilmembers, yeah, go ahead and make your way there, but any other thoughts or comments prior to having the public hearing that you had wanted to come back to?
No, I'd just say that I think it's, looks like a nice project, and I think, I think they've done a, done a great job in, in crafting the, the site in terms of keeping trees, in terms of keeping the soils on there without having to do a lot of trucking, in terms of keeping the elevation, so they're going to have nice views from those sites. And I, you know, I really compliment them on that, and I think that really makes the project work, where before it was really not, not very workable because the cost of moving all that dirt and everything really added to the cost of developing, and then it wasn't a feasible project. So I think they've done a nice job in, in coming up with a good solution. So we're looking forward to having another beautiful development in Eden Prairie, and thanks for being a part of, of developing our city and making it a great place to live.
Agreed. And so a good segue into why Mr. Ellis is here. If people have seen, and I don't know if you plan to show the whole Beverly Hills, no, that's the whole Beverly Drive neighborhood, but clearly, when we have that large of a neighborhood with one road going in and out, there's a safety issue. And so we've been, as a city, really planning for, gosh, two decades, really looking at all those five acre lots that, when they did develop, we would need to look at our road system in and out. And so we need another way out besides Beverly Drive. And there are really three alternatives, I'm assuming. One of them was to have used this project, and I think you presented well how problematic that could be, were we to have gone that path. And so I think you're going to talk about if we don't go that way with this project, which we're not leaning to do that, what are the alternatives then that we would have to eventually, because we need another way in and out of this neighborhood?
Yes, exactly. Exactly, Mayor Case. So just taking a look at the diagram that we have of the entire neighborhood, for a little bit, a little bit of context, we have roughly, when you count all the lots that front Beverly and are to the north, so all of this area, right now, there's about a little over 100 single-family residential lots. And we know that there's development potential here with Mr. Blake's property, Mr. Klein's property, and the Metropolitan Airport's commission also owns property that's outside runway protection zone that could be single-family as well. So with 100 residents now, and that would probably ultimately be about 150, 140, 50, once all the properties develop, that's a lot of traffic, a big burden to put on Beverly Drive, and also for the residents that own lots along Beverly Drive. It wouldn't be very desirable if all the traffic was funneled to that location. So we know that it's been important to come up with a secondary east-west access, and there's really, you know, as I see it, three options. We have Cirrus Way, which is, it's a, it's a road, quasi-road that exists today on MAC property. It's got steep grades, and quite frankly, if that were to develop, it's very inefficient because you have a road that drops with very steep side slopes, so it'd be hard to build any houses that would front that road. So not a very efficient use of land. Another option would be the extension of the existing Prospect Road, where it dead-ends now, and have that come across the Klein and Pembton property and tie in with the existing Prospect Road. That would be an ideal location, because then there'd be a continuous road from east all the way to the west, and it would go all the way to Spring Road. But this, again, has some topography challenges. Again, not a very efficient use of the property because a lot of dirt would have to move. I don't know that you'd have very desirable lots, but it's certainly a possibility. I think probably the one that makes the most sense, without having spent a lot of effort in design and, and review, might be a Cirrus Way where it does come off of Sky Lane, but it curves down to the south and ties in with Prospect Road. And I say that because the elevation at this location is pretty similar to the elevation here. So there wouldn't be, need to be a lot of dirt that would move. It would work well with the existing topography. Might have fewer impacts, I guess that's yet to be determined. We'll have to really wait for future developments to come in and get serious about how they might lay out the property. But just doing a quick 15, 20-minute sketch right before the city council, kind of laid out what that might look like if it were subdivided. So again, let me get north, similar to the other. So again, you'd have Cirrus Way here, and it could drop down and tie in with Eden Prairie Road here. Again, elevation's very close to matching here and here. And that's better because from the elevation from this location to here, it's quite a bit of a distance uphill. And similar here, the elevation here is much lower than it is up here. So from an efficiency of land, cost of development, that might be a better option, but really, until development comes in for us to review, we don't know what's going to work best. And until that happens, we don't know. But having said that, the Beverly Hill development as proposed doesn't prohibit a future east-west connection. In fact, it really did nothing for a new east-west connection. It simply would have provided another way for traffic to come down to Beverly Drive, which wasn't exactly what we were looking for. We were just trying to push for more roadway connections. But I think really what's important here is another roadway connection to Eden Prairie Road.
So talk about the MAC land in terms of its buildability, because that would, a lot of us, I'm sure, are a little confused about that, thinking it might have been Zone B or something.
Yeah, and, and I don't have, like I said, this was just a quick drawing I did right before the city council meeting, but there is an area that's somewhere in this vicinity and to the south that could be developed, a single-family. And I think there's discussions we've had with MAC, knowing that we do want a future second roadway connection, and Cirrus Way might be one of those alternatives. So I'm not sure what their perspective on that is, but it's something that we've at least had discussions. Now, anything north of here is within that protection zone that I think both they and the city agree that there should be no development in that area.
Even if it couldn't be developed on the MAC land, would they potentially allow us to run a road through it without the development?
Possibility. It would take board, board action, of course, but it's something that we've kind of laid out there, as if there were no development, could we somehow acquire an easement to make this connection? And I think they're receptive, understanding that that's a safety perspective we have, and that they would work with us. I will point out, too, that when we did the assessment agreement for Eden Prairie Road, there were assessments that were signed to MAC for that future potential of development.
That they paid on, so there's commitment.
Yes, so I think that there's this understanding that the potential exists, is there the will for it, that we don't know.
We'll be having our, probably one of our last, if not the last, joint airport zoning board meetings on April 10th, so next, next week, essentially, we'll be having one of the last meetings, that meeting will be held here at the city. So we can certainly talk about that at that meeting.
Good idea.
All right. Anything else, Mr. Ellis? Councilmembers, what's your pleasure? Do you want to discuss a little bit more? Somebody want to make a motion?
Well, I can continue my motion and approve the first reading of the ordinance for zoning district change from rural to R1-9.5 on 6.86 acres, adopt a resolution for preliminary plat of two lots into 17 lots and two outlots on 6.86 acres, and direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
And the one council condition that we all nodded to, whatever, was the driveway turnarounds or some way to make it safe to go in and out onto, onto Eden Prairie Road.
Yes.
Correct.
Counsel, any other discussion? I will entertain a motion then.
We have a motion.
Sorry, I will actually, I will actually take a vote on it then. Sorry about that. All those in, it was seconded, right? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Great. And then as Councilmember Bravo said, welcome. Thank you for all the work you've done. We look forward to the final project.
Congratulations.
All right, we have a second public hearing. Mr. Getchow?
We do, mayor and councilmembers, and we will have, this item will be acted upon by both the city council and then the HRA. You may recall, development that we're pretty excited about in the coming year is kind of the multi-generational, multi-pronged development happening on Eden Prairie Road with the 100-plus senior unit Applewood complex and the 16 townhomes and the 58-unit mixed-income common bond project on the corner of Eden Prairie Road near Highway 212. The common bond property, known as Trail Point Ridge, is contemplating the use of tax increment financing for the affordable units that we've talked about for quite some time. So we've come to that point now where we need to take action on adopting the redevelopment plan and the tax increment plan this evening and hold a public hearing. It is my understanding that the Trail Ridge Point, the common bond project applicant, or previously approved applicant, right, is here to maybe give a quick refresher on that project if it so pleases the council, and then we could hold our public hearing. We also have our financial advisor here as well, from Ellers and Associates, related to all the work that they did putting together the tax increment financing plan, if you had detailed questions on that. So I see Diana with Common Bond to maybe provide a quick overview. And as I mentioned, we have a public hearing that we need to hold, and then the applicant, staff, and our financial advisor can answer any questions you might have on our tax increment financing plan.
Great. Diana?
Public hearing, there's no closing the public hearing or anything on the agenda. Use this, use this. Public hearing, there's no closing, the public hearing or anything. City staff?
Yeah.
Oh, there I am. Good evening, thanks so much for your time this evening, and I apologize for my casual appearance. My, the head of our department, Cecile Bedore, was on her way but encountered a flat tires, so I scrambled quickly to get out the door. So thanks for your understanding and thanks for the introduction. So I'm here to provide a high-level recap of the development, Trail Point Ridge, as part of Smith Village. Most of you, if not all, have seen this development before, so thanks for your support and previous comments. So Common Bond is the, is a nonprofit organization. We're a developer, property manager, and also supportive service provider based in St. Paul, founded in 1971 out of the social justice movement of that era and have worked diligently to provide and develop affordable housing in Minnesota and also Wisconsin and Iowa for the last 40-some years. And a key to the success of our organization is the success of our residents. So we, as a, as an organization, I'm part of the real estate department and the development wing, but a major component of our organization is proper, is professional property management and also our supportive services group that's called Advantage Services. And we, so we provide development services and also onsite property management at each of our housing communities, supportive services. And we also have been recognized in the industry as a, you know, a go-to organization to provide these professional property management services, who are also offering third-party management to, to other organizations. So in total, we, we own, operate, and then manage about 140 properties throughout the three-state area that's serving over 12,000 residents, who are really proud of the, of the work we're doing. And it's our goal to, to have broader reach, serving over 15,000 residents by 2025. And then, so, and key to our success of our residents is the supportive services we provide. So we provide what we call advantage services at, to varying levels at each of our housing communities as well. And so, so the project we're discussing today is one component of Smith Village, as was presented. It's at the, at 16397 Glory Lane, just north of Highway 212 and, and off of Eden Prairie Road. The development is one component of Smith Village. It's a great partnership we've been working on for, for a handful of years now with United Properties and Holly Land Corporation, incorporating the 100-unit for sale, a senior co-op development being developed by United Properties called Applewood Point, as well as six custom town homes, but being developed by Holly Land Corporation. And the, the site itself offers indoor recreation opportunities within both of the multifamily housing developments as well as recreational spaces on the outdoors as well. And we're really excited, it's a great location, being right on the Minnesota River Bluffs Regional Trail, and then across the street from Miller Park, the 90-plus acres will be great for, for the development as a whole and the residents at, on site. Here's a few renderings of the development. Trail Point Ridge is on the upper left. It's a four-story development with underground parking, with onsite supportive services, onsite property management, as well as community space and community room on the interior and exterior, tot lot and sport court for, for youth recreation. The picture on the right is a graphic of what, a kind of example, custom kitchen within the custom townhomes. And the lower rendering is Applewood Point. For Trail Point Ridge, it's a multifamily, 58-unit housing community, split between one, two, and three-bedroom units, which will serve residents, a mix from residents making 30% of the area median income, all the way up to unrestricted units, which will serve, serve market rate rents. And here we have a graphic of the rents and income limits for the development, split out between the one, two, and three-bedroom. You can see the, the income limits as well as the, the rents available for those units. So one bedroom's ranging from $700 up to a three-bedroom market rate unit at $1,500. And income limits, which show the incomes for potential residents, ranging from $20,000 for, for one person at that 30% of the area median income, all the way up to, I would reference, the, the 60% column for a family of four is around $56,000 per year. So the, for the, for the development, we, it's a tax credit housing development is, so the Minnesota Housing has allocated competitive tax credits to the development, so that's the, that provides about 70% of the sources of funds to develop the, the building. And in order to lease the, the units, will, we will have annual, year-long leases. And as you can see by the, the rents and incomes, that are, the residents will, are typically working individuals or those on social security for, we do have, we have included six units, it's either seven or six, six units for individuals with disabilities. So it's a fully elevator building and we do have some, some subsidy associated with those units to help residents pay for rents. And just a little bit more about the location and amenities. We're so excited, this will be our first development in Eden Prairie, so we're just thrilled to be part of the community, a top workforce just south of, or workforce center just south of the Smith Douglas Moore House along the regional trail. So I, we, as an organization, thank you for the support along the way. And here's a mood board that we, you have seen previously to provide kind of a concept for what we were envisioning for this housing community. And, so the timeline for the project, we've secured, aside from this TIF, we've, the project is fully funded and secured. We're working with city staff and attorneys to, to put together the development agreements for, for the development and aiming for a May 7 council agenda. And then we anticipate construction to start this summer. And then it's a 12-month schedule, so anticipate completion, hopefully in time for the school year next year in 2020. And that, with that, I'm here, Cecile is not, so available for any questions you have. Thank you.
Thanks for being here this evening. Counsel, any questions for the proponent?
I do have a question for staff.
Or for staff.
This is just for Trail Ridge. I know she mentioned the Applewood and the townhouses and such, but the TIF district is just Trail Ridge, correct?
That is correct, Councilmember Nelson.
Okay, just wanted, made it a little less, you know, without talking about all of those. Are we going to hear the details on the TIF piece?
You certainly can. Our financial advisor, Rebecca Kurtz, could run through, she could give you a quick overview of the, the tax increment financing plan, sure.
Good evening, Rebecca Kurtz from Ellers. And I will start with saying, with the TIF plan that is for your consideration this evening, it's important to remember, it really is a plan and it is setting out that framework for providing the tool. The actual commitment of the TIF will be taken, considered when the development agreement is approved. But what is being proposed this evening is a housing tax increment financing district. It has a maximum of 26 years of increment. Again, those are maximums and final details of the amount of TIF and the term would be considered and documented in the final development agreement when that's considered. The TIF plan itself is only consisting of the one parcel on Glory Lane. We have set a budget in the TIF plan with a maximum budget of $2.7 million. However, that is what we are estimating total TIF with inflation over time, it is a maximum. With the negotiations on the development agreement, the amount of assistance would be closer to $696,000. So I don't want you to be concerned by seeing a large number in the, the TIF plan because that is not the agreement. With that, again, we are estimating roughly about $60,000 in increment over annually with the TIF district. The city could retain up to 20% of that for admin and for other affordable housing uses as it deems or as it identifies over time. Happy to answer other specifics, that's a general overview of the district, though.
That's, was perfect length, perfect information, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, let's go ahead and open the public hearing and then we can have additional discussion. So this is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience that would wish to address the city council on this project? Why don't we go ahead and close the public hearing, just make sure that we have no further conversation discussion? So someone?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, any additional discussion or questions that you'd like to ask? If not, I'll entertain a motion then.
Move to adopt the resolution requesting a modification to the redevelopment plan for redevelopment project area number five, establishing tax increment financing district number 23, Trail Point Ridge therein, and adopting a tax increment financing plan therefore.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Now we have to go through the HRA to do similar
We do.
Things again. So do you want to say anything before I open up that, Mr. Getchow?
Well, maybe just a couple items. So you have, when you open up the meeting, you're going to have minutes from prior meetings. You're going to take the exact same action in the HRA with the TIF district, and then there's one additional action, item number five, and I'll just mention it really quick, that it's just advancing money from the HRA fund for the TIF project, a small interfund loan that needs to be authorized in advance of the project.
Okay. So I call the HRA meeting together. Roll call.
Councilmember Aho?
Here.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Here.
Councilmember Narayan?
Here.
Councilmember Nelson?
Here.
Mayor Case?
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the HRA minutes from December 4th, 2018?
I move to approve the HRA minutes from December 14, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any items to question? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? All right, is there a motion to move to approve the HRA minutes from January 8th, 2019?
I move to approve the HRA minutes from January 8th, 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
Anything to question off of those minutes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Next, do, should I just run through these or should I, no reason to go back? Okay. Is there a motion then to adopt that resolution? Go ahead and read that, somebody.
I'll make a motion to move to adopt the resolution requesting a modification to the redevelopment plan for redevelopment project area number five, establishing a tax increment financing district number 23, Trail Point Ridge therein, and adopting a tax increment financing plan therefore.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Is there a motion for adopting the next resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution authorizing an interfund loan for advance of certain costs in connection with the tax increment financing district number 23, Trail Point Ridge.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, is there a motion to adjourn the HRA meeting?
I move to adjourn the HRA meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're back to the council meeting now. And payment of claims, is there a motion to approve the payment of claims?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any items you wish to pull or discuss or ask questions about? All those in favor of payment of claims, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? I'm sorry. As I, as I was about to say, thank you, missed it again. We need to do this by roll call. Please, roll call. Thank you.
Councilmember Aho?
Oh, do we have a motion, right? We have a motion in a second?
We have a motion.
Is that correct?
Yep.
Yes, I made it.
Okay, thanks for, well, five of you jumping and catching me on that. That's good.
Aye.
Councilmember Freiberg?
Here.
Aye.
Councilmember Narayan?
Aye.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Mayor Case?
Aye, thank you so much. All right, we have no reports of council members nor city manager. I believe, Mr. Getchow, anything else for council members to come before the council this evening? You can speak up loudly and interrupt me if so. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn the city council meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? This meeting is adjourned.